Call the meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Heisler.
Here.
Consilla.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ridgewood.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Silsby. Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arlen.
Here. Alderman Silsby is excused. Roll call of department heads.
Please Chief Clay. Bar Chief Langson.
Here.
Rocket Sprague.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Metrign.
Here.
Tim Gregoritz.
Here.
Jim Schneider. Andrew Spearman.
Here.
Emily Folks. Chuck Shaffer.
The list of departmental taking the kitchen, so Alderman Folks, Chuck Shaffer, Ken Vaughn, Jim Schneider, and Chief Clay, he's obviously all excuse this evening, but most of them have representation here in the department. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time if you please stand and join me to publicly declare...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, um, we do not have any scheduled public hearings this evening. Anyone who would like to speak for public participation, here's your opportunity to step up to the microphone, please, uh, try to keep your remarks to two to three minutes and please give your name and address. Does anyone this evening like to come forward? Yes, sir?
I'm Bob Simpson from Ancient Order of Hibernians. Our division president Pat Hickey is sick and couldn't make it here tonight. Uh, we just wanted to thank everyone who was associated with that parade Saturday. It was a great day. Uh, everyone who marched or feuded, uh, I think everyone had a great time. It was a good day for Ancient Order of Hibernians as well as for the city of Belleville. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. It was a beautiful day and the turnout was spectacular. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Maureen Morris. I live in 618 South Jackson Street. And surprise, surprise, my issue happens to be 515 South Jackson. Get ready this weekend, okay? I'm not a electrician, but these new air conditioning units apparently seem to be sitting down into water. Okay? Now, I can understand how this might go awry when the city of Belleville does not apparently pay significantly appropriate electrical permits. Now, I also understand that there are two different, uh, charges for electrical permits. There are one for homeowners like myself, and there is another one for electrical contractors under the ordinance of this city. As far as I can tell, there is absolutely no time somebody does electrical work anywhere without pulling the appropriate permits. I don't even know how our housing department goes in and checks something like this if we don't even have the electrical permits. Okay? So I have asked Mayor at length, not only about the electrical problem, the water problem, all right, but especially the parking problem. We are moving families into this building even as we speak, and it has been over a year and one month. We have never, ever, ever had an honest answer addressing any of this. I am asking you one more time, Mr. Everett, please, please see if we can't do this as soon as possible. Thank you.
And Mrs. Morris, everything you gave me last week was forwarded to Assistant City Attorney Michael Flynn.
Thank you.
I spoke this morning. He was out last week a few days and I was out Friday, and he assured me he would review it all and get back with me. We have a meeting.
He was part and copied on a letter November the first that this city issued capstone saying that most of the parking was sub-efficient, not pub-compliant. So everybody's known it since then. You and he have known that that block was sold off in 1997. So we have been more than patient with the city, with the city departments, okay? Now that we are actively moving these families in this building, and by the way, Mayor, do you know how these people empty their trash out of that building? They go out of the front, they throw the trash in their vehicle, they go around to the back of the building and put it in the dumpster because fifty percent of them can't use the decks. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir?
Michael Heisler, 701 Centerville. Um, I'm here to speak to the council about the Merit Home building. First, let me state that if Mr. Cook wants to convert the property to Memorial Park, then Mr. Cook should purchase the property and convert it to a memorial park. Mr. Cook can pay for demolition building. Mr. Cook can pay for the design and construction of Memorial Park. Mr. Cook can then set up a trust fund to pay property taxes and cover park maintenance for all the returnees. Before the city purchased Merit Home building, Belleville News Democrat published an article where the mayor told the city council and taxpayers, quote, "I'll flip the building in a few months for a profit." That was over twenty-four months ago. Since that time, taxpayers have shelled out over forty thousand dollars for utilities and other expenses related to the property. This doesn't include the ten thousand dollars paid for a parking study to tell us that the building has nine parking spots. During the last finance committee, Mayor let it be known that the proposed budget for next year includes two hundred thousand dollars towards demolition of the Merit Home. What happened when this isn't enough money? Another two hundred thousand dollar taxpayer dollar? And another two hundred thousand on top of that? The city has no current or future plans to use the Merit Home building or the property to generate revenue. I feel the city council should look into selling the property as soon as possible and stop wasting taxpayer money. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Attorney.
Score line at 318 South Twenty Hood Street, Belleville. I've got three little topics. I think this rusty piece of art from New York City, I'm not trying to be unpatriotic, but I just wonder how many people are actually gonna visit that site maybe once in their life, but that often? And then who's gonna have to do the upkeep and the cleaning of the bathrooms and all this other stuff? And I definitely am a hundred percent opposed to any kind of parking garage. It's costing fifty-five thousand just to figure out where to put the thing. And I drove around town tonight and there's gobs of parking meters that are sitting vacant. And also drove around town at eleven in the morning and there's gobs of parking meters empty. And there's lots, empty lots all over the place. I don't mean parking, well, even parking lots are pretty, pretty empty most of the time. And there's also a lot of grassy lots, just vacant lots that could be simply converted into a parking lot by paving it over and using that stuff to build an expensive parking garage. And these tenants that want free parking for these lofts, uh, let them rent parking spaces somewhere. Yeah, I don't think it's up to the taxpayers to furnish these people who want to live in a loft, uh, taxpayer financed parking spots. And as far as the swimming pool, if it makes money, okay. If it don't make money, I guess to close it. It's up to them then. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir?
Matthew Denison, 261 Levin Avenue. A resident of Belleville all my life, very seventy years. Did I give him Boy Scouts, um, attended all Belleville High School, Belleville High School, junior high, grade school. Worked at Belleville Swimming Pool from the time of eighty-nine through ninety-three. I taught swimming lessons there to numerous kids. I was just wondering if there's a backup plan. I mean, we spent a lot of money on making downtown Belleville from, let's see, the first block past the fountain on to down to where Bowing's Barber Shop is. We did something for the adults and we need to keep it for the kids too. So, um, I understand that sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but, um, anybody ever thought of a fundraiser? They're done all the time. I mean, sixty thousand dollars, a lot of duty for a fundraiser, but I think we have canned crackers, other parks and recreation kids use them, high school kids come there and practice swimming, um, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I was part, I'm an Eagle Scout, so I was part of Belleville Boy Scouts, and I just think some might need to step up and make a backup plan if you're planning on closing the pool this year.
Thank you, sir. Sir, do you have a second?
Oh, Will Vile, 119 South Charles, Your Honor, Council. This gentleman just brought up, uh, the subject of, which is the pool. And my background is aviation maintenance. We have a study in aviation, pay me now or pay me later. I think the pool is one of these situations. Yeah, it's gonna be a money loser. You're never gonna make money on a municipal pool. But we have a lot of children in the community that do not have the economic wherewithal to go to buy a pool, go to country club, take a vacation. You know, do something to keep them out of trouble. Now, I live right down there at Lincoln and Charles, and Maureen brought up that we're having more housing coming into the neighborhood. And we have a lot of children. And I say children kind of loosely because a lot of them are getting adults. They come into our neighborhood during the summer because their parents want to see them alive for their school year when they go back to live where they're vacationing. Therein lies the problem. We've got these kids. They need something to do. You go to a pool, they're supervised. They don't behave, they get kicked out. You can't wear gang colors in a pool. You can't carry a weapon. It wears you out. Doesn't matter what size you are, how athletic you are, you know, you can be an equal in a pool. Now, whether you vote to keep the pool open or close it, I don't care. I don't have any kids here in town. But I can just tell you, from what I see, sitting on my front porch, working on my house, we need something for the kids to do that doesn't cost them. And unfortunately, that is just the way it is. These kids don't have the money. You know, if it was mine or others, I'd put up some of these bike cages in the park, just let them beat each other up or, you know, wear themselves out. We can't do that. Parents object. Next best thing, I think, is a pool. Because it's someplace to go and what's that cost if we close that pool and we have some tweens running around and Chief Clay has to make a sweep of the neighborhood? What's that cost? What, what's it cost if we have a fifteen or a fourteen-year-old that somebody slips them psilocybin or LSD in a drink when they're just trying to be cool and hanging out for the evening? I think sixty thousand bucks for cheap price, maybe save one kid. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Hearing a closed public participation. Okay, um, this time we'll have the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March fifth, two thousand twelve. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to approve and file the minutes.
Motion by Alderman Heisler.
Second by Alderman Consilla.
Do I hear any discussion?
I asked you last time if you had left the minutes for the previous. It was not, I suppose, it was outside. Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Last month, um, Citizen Joe Sworzer presented a petition. I didn't see him actually present it to the front table. Was it actually submitted or something that he had?
He did not give it to me. I don't know if he did it to... No, he never actually, I think he mentioned it, but he never brought it forward. Okay. Is that you? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes from the, um, March fifth meeting two thousand twelve. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Plagues, payroll, dispersments.
Yes, Your Honor, they have the plagues, payroll, and dispersment to pay.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear any discussion?
Can I ask how we're doing on the rebates for those checks?
Uh, Jamie?
Uh, there's another batch just approved right now with the claim, payroll, dispersments, and there's probably about one more batch to go out, about seven hundred more checks. Okay, we're hoping to have the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call of the motion.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. We have a housing report of cash receipts to date for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to accept and file.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor of accepting the housing report and having it filed for audit signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have a treasures report, city of Belleville funds and statement of cash and investments for February two thousand twelve. What's your pleasure?
Motion, Allen, received and filed.
Motion by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor, received and filing, this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alderman, uh, oral reports. Alderman Anderson.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the master steward committee, I can make the motion to approve the seven change orders in long-term control plan project involving five hundred thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars in assets.
Motion by Alderman Anderson. Second by Alderman Heisler to make that motion coming from Master Stewart. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Number B, motion to approve solicitor's license request for Ann, Annie S. Elliott to sell Edward Jones investment. What's your pleasure?
I move with the grant.
Motion by Alderman Consilla. Second by Alderman Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alderman Meyer.
My, Your Honor, on behalf of the economic development and annexation of the city, I'd like to make a motion to approve the scope work and speed proposal for Rich Associates and that the downtown park is at feasibility study. So...
Motion by Alderman Meyer. Second by Alderman Consilla. Discussion. Yes, sir?
Aye.
No, we're in the motion, Your Honor. Does it state exactly what the city's paying? How much is it?
The, uh, total study is, uh, Eric, fifty-five thousand?
Five thousand seven fifty.
And it's split equal between downtown redevelopment and the city of Belleville. So it's a twenty-seven...
Twenty-seven, uh, eight, seven, eight. Can that be part of the motion?
It could be part of the motion, then, split equally.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, with the...
It's, it's...
Do you need to...
Do you guys have no problem with that, the made motion?
No.
Except doesn't...
Still, uh, still on record, Your Honor, but, uh, I just don't see it as being a, uh, expenditure worth our interest at this time.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, yes. I have to agree with Alderman Hayden. I asked you a couple, it was for the February twenty-first, two thousand twelve meeting. I asked about the Mertz, uh, bills that we were sending out at Millstock, and you stated that it was because Offenberger doesn't cover some things under warranty and also the parts were cheaper at Mertz. And you said that we can get it cheaper.
I think it was cheaper wasn't the answer, that the police department has no decision that the county attorney...
But if we're stating that if you can buy it cheaper, go out of town to buy it, I don't think we need a parking garage.
I don't even know that, I think we're mixing apples and oranges, Alderman Schneider, because I think in some cases Offenberger could even do some of the work that we needed at certain times because of their work schedule. And so the, the city mechanic and, and Don Sachs worked on trying to get these police cars back in service as quickly as possible. Is that correct, I guess this? Believe me, we try to do everything possible in the city, but when, when the firm, you know, can't handle you because of their own workload and they're basically telling you there are other nearby, uh, rep dealer representatives that can take care of you much quicker, I think we got to the point to get the cars back in service, that was a consideration. But it's not the same thing.
Well, I still think we don't need a parking garage because it's just a lot of money spent that...
Okay, I mean, you're, you're, title your opinion, the, the business people from downtown redevelopment are the ones that pushed this and brought this forward and, and have been really strongly encouraging us to consider this. That's why we're here tonight. That's why they had unanimous vote in their group and we're here with this motion, so... Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll, yes, ma'am?
When we talked about this before, this is a study that should not get stale, that even if we do not financially afford to build a garage, the study itself is still viable information.
I'm, I'm very confident, and I raised some of those same questions myself, that I think this study's gonna tell us a lot of things that will be helpful to our downtown merchants, investors of business, uh, the city itself, uh, a number of people dealing with many parking concerns and utilization of property and, you know, there's, there's a whole host of things I think this can tell us. I, I think this can be a very beneficial tool. Uh, but, you know, it's one of the things right now, uh, we're at a point with growing downtown, and we made, this council made a significant investment when we did a seven million dollar street state. And we're, we, we've really seen the fruits of our labor turning things around. And our festivals are busy and our parades are busy and we've seen a lot of things happening. But this, this joint partnership, twenty-seven thousand dollars apiece, if we don't do it, all of us here, staff excluded, we're speculating. And these are professional people who deal in parking structures all over the country, and I think they can give us some really good insight, uh, that I, I think that we can use in a lot of different ways. It may be that we don't need a parking study or a parking structure at this time, uh, but they're gonna talk to us about other opportunities and where, if we were gonna find service lots, where would be best appropriate? You know, they're gonna evaluate a lot of things that only a group that does things of this nature can do. Um, you know, we did a parking count, and I, and, and just to go back to the gentleman who spoke about the Merit Home, we did not do a ten thousand dollar parking study for the Merit Home. We happened to do a parking evaluation and count and assessment of all the spaces and, and empty fronts and everything throughout downtown about the same time that some of the Merit Home stuff was going on. And about the same time, we had a couple of developers looking at the Merit Home, but that was never because of the Merit Home. That ten thousand dollars had really very little to nothing to do other than maybe being quoted as reminded that the Merit Home only had eight or nine spaces. So I agree with you on that, but that was never part of that ten thousand dollars. But this is much different than that evaluation. So we have a motion and we have a second.
What's the account in Merit?
I'm sorry?
It's coming out of which account? I don't think that's, uh, to the record.
Uh, the, the city's portion is gonna come out of the TIP account, right, Jamie? TIP seventeen, I believe, is where we're taking it out, which is the downtown TIP, where these merchants who, uh, who pay, uh, taxes into the downtown special service district and into TIP three, TIP seventeen, are the ones that are driving the bus, asking us to do this. So, you know, I think we're listening to our merchants at this point to get some more, gather some more information. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Uh, Anderson. Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
No. Motion carries. This time we'll go on to number D. Motion to approve a street banner permit for Ardena Square to display the banner of advertising the logo and dates for Ardena Square at North Illinois Street entrance.
I know we can apply for the request.
Motion by Alderman Meyer. Second by Alderman Heisler. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion?
How, how long is it gonna go?
It's the same amount of time to allow any of them. I take the maximum, I, is, you have... They're three weeks, I think.
Okay.
It is, there's a designated time.
Okay.
So, it's, 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 it's very long. We have motion, second, to approve the Ardena Square's, uh, request. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Uh, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make the following eight motions separately and hold on a second. First motion to approve the low bid of a hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars from Gates Construction for the demolition of six properties. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Martinson. Do I hear discussion about the first motion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor, a motion to approve the development agreement with Seven High Street Properties LLC. So moved, Your Honor.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve the development agreement with Seven High Street Properties LLC. So move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear any discussion? This is to abate the tax on building materials in the enterprise zone for the expansion of that business. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
A motion to not charge the current six parades, Belville District 118 School Picking Parade, Memorial Day Parade, Shrine Circus Parade, Labor Day Parade, Santa Claus Parade, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Any fees and new parades would have to be reviewed and assessed by the City Council. So move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Meyer, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. The next one, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to reject possible expenses for pool repairs and close the pool for the 2012 season and to look into possible future partnerships for a new facility. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Alderman Meyer. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Mr. Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to proceed with the mayor's policy of reimbursement of 80% of overtime expenses for established city-sponsored festivals. Any new festivals, festivals slash activities that are not city-sponsored events would have to reimburse the city 100% of the overtime expense. So move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second. Second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Mr. Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to proceed with the mayor's policy of reimbursement of 80% of overtime expenses for established city-sponsored festivals. Any new festivals, festivals slash activities that are not city-sponsored events would have to reimburse the city 100% of the overtime expense. So move, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second. Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. The next one, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to reject possible expenses for pool repairs and close the pool for the 2012 season and to look into possible future partnerships for a new facility. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. Next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. The next one, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to reject possible expenses for pool repairs and close the pool for the 2012 season and to look into possible future partnerships for a new facility. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. The next one.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries. The next one, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, your honor. A motion to approve request from the ancient order of librarians to not charge them a fee for the 2012 St. Patrick's Day Parade. So move, your honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, who is the second? Second by Alderman Meyer, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
But, yes, I think we've really let the people down. We know that this pool needed to have serious work on it. Why didn't we start something a long time ago, start another process? The million dollars we spent on the angler's park, that could have been a good down payment on a water park. We have let the people down. There is nothing now. We knew it wasn't going to last, so why did we wait till it completely is no pool?
Well, Alderman Schneider, I will tell you, you didn't come to me with a lot of issues, but this is the first time tonight I've ever heard you speak, asking why we've never had any investigation or any, any.
No, that's wrong, sir.
No? Okay.
Mr. Horni, you did an investigation in December, and we just found out about it in March. That's the point. It seems like, mayor, we just go through, it's almost like everything is kept secret.
There's no secret.
The council is surprised.
The park board, the staff, and everybody, and everybody.
We've strung the people along.
We have not strung them by law. We have tried hard to keep this pool open. I have been an advocate for this pool every year I've been mayor. And, you know, Joe, if, if you could spin this the other way, you'd be spinning, that would be unbelieveable with taxpayers' dollars. I, I just disagree with you here. You at one point, I think, made a statement that the pool should be considered to be[1073.00]
Hindsight's always twenty-twenty. I would say, yeah, if it was perfect, we could, we could have maybe said this, you know, but until we had a definitive answer from the state, we didn't know if, no matter what our efforts were, we were gonna be even allowed to open the pool, and we just found that out two weeks ago.
But we knew it was bad, and then we spent a million dollars for the park. That money could have been put to use somewhere else.
And we've already received a half a million to six hundred thousand in grants for that park, so...
But it's not gonna be... We need a swimming pool, we didn't need another park.
Well, you know, the council at that time disagreed with us.
Okay, so whether we open this year or not, we're pretty much faced with a decision. We have an old, old pool, and it sometime will be replaced. I appreciate that you are looking for partners, because I think that probably is the issue. When I came back from the I N L convention last September, I did give Mr. Schneider a brochure that I picked up there about a company that does do studies. Just like we're hiring a parking firm, there are swimming pool firms that look within the thirty-five mile radius of your community, so you audit it as available and best places for you. Do we intend to hire any professionals to give us advice? Are we just kind of feeling our way blind in the dark, looking for partners?
We're not feeling our way blind, and these people have already come forward to us and said...
But none of us are experts on where should we...
And the article, the park board will come back and recommend, I'm sure, that is their task, to look at program and development of the park system, and they've done a good job over the years. I'm sure that they're gonna come back and look at a study as we move forward in this bill. It's unfortunate, but we have had this conversation, and some of you, I understand, have been on the council in the last year, but this city has had this conversation every year at Budget Time. We have been faced for seven years in a row with tough decisions about this poor old swimming pool.
So people are frustrated then, why isn't there at this point a down-the-road plan? When we have known for years this point would come, why isn't there always a plan in place?
Most people are saying, you know, we get more important things than a swimming pool at this point.
Well, you know, Alderman Holt, since I took over being mayor, we had to address the EPA demands of what we're engaged in now, is the first days of forty-four million mandated EPA repairs that we had no choice. One of the first things I had to do when I took over was make countless trips to Springfield with Royce and others to deal with that topic. Otherwise, we'd have been shut down and not able to issue another sewer permit. We've had, we had to deal with, with police and fire issues to make sure we keep public safety first and foremost in this city. We've had to deal with the state right now, as of today, what do you, about one point three billion they still owe us today, Jamie?
One point five.
One point five they owe us today on back money. We have struggled in this tough economy like everybody. We, we've been fixing roads rapidly, thanks to T I F, uh, but, but, you know, my point is, the pool is extremely important, believe me. I took the kids from the Franklin Neighborhood Camp that I helped start to that pool every week for years, and they still go there. This bothers me deeply.
I'm just saying, just how we know we can't build a parking garage today, even if the study was done, we are still planning ahead. I want a study done...
And there will be, there will be a study done. There'll have to be. You can't go out and invest in a, any new partners are not going to agree to build and invest anything without a study being done. There will have to be, and I will support that study.
How often can you get the same partnership agreement then?
Well, and I think the partners that have come to the table, and there's other potential ones, are great opportunities. I think this is a very sad day, on one hand. I think it is a great opportunity, knowing that people want to step up to the plate, and as hindsight, as I said again, it, it, you know, somebody can always find something that we're doing wrong and say, we should have done it quicker. Okay, maybe we should have. But the bottom line is, we, the city council, have to make a decision, and it is very questionable. The pool also last summer lost fifty thousand dollars in the general fund in revenue. Now, the year before was about thirty, uh, and, and I think we come to the point, and believe me, uh, as the, as the chief executive officer of the city, I think the city of our size should have a pool. But with the uncertainty of the, of the, of the structure, and as much as the various people, professionals we've had out there, and they have told us, your pipe system is lucky to make another system, a season. Your, your walls of your tank are so thin, you can't sandblast them or do any more preparation to them, uh, they're, they're, that's it, the rebar's coming through. We, we know that we've got other issues that have to be tackled, and we know that ADA now with the new rules that came into effect March fifteenth, two thousand twelve, last week, we know that there are some major issues facing us, and Mr. Reicher's report that I did have on my desk sometime in January, um, is, is probably his guesstimation is, is that a half a million dollars would have to be spent to take that pool up to the, the standards of what ADA would expect. Um, that, that is a, a, a pretty, uh, pretty unbelievable amount of money. Sir, I don't normally ask for participation from the audience, do you have something to add that's different?
Well, yes, quite a bit. I'm from Troy, Illinois, but I swam in that pool quite a bit back in my younger days. And I came here to, uh, if this sixty thousand dollars would do the job to get the thing going for this year, I would be willing to donate a hundred dollars, and if you could get, uh, another six hundred people that would be able to do that, that would, that would pay the job.
And I, I appreciate that, sir, and if I really thought, if I honestly thought sixty thousand dollars would definitely do it for sure, and that, and that we would not be back to the city council or anybody else, I would put a hundred dollars in here tonight, and I don't have a lot of money, but I would do it tonight, too. I just unfortunately, I, I've, I've come to the point, looking at all these things, and that's what's been the tough decision for all of us, I, I think we've unfortunately are at a, we're at a point of impasse that there's, there's, uh, there's more repairs than we have dollars at the moment that we can spend. Uh, I, I am very sincere about getting going on where we go from here. I am also talking to the camps and to the local Y about trying to get them to be hooked up this summer so that they can still have swimming opportunities. Uh, the group of seniors who swim out there, we're working on the possibility of, of an opportunity for them to have a location. But we could do all of this, I'm telling you, and what the people who've been out there, the pool experts, and Mr. Reicher have told us, you could do all of this, and when you charge the lines, uh, in May, he said, I'm telling you, this year more than ever, I have to believe it's gonna be very iffy that the system's gonna take all the pressure, because it's getting so brittle.
Your honor, I'm not in the pool, so...
I, I don't know, but we're, we're well over a million dollars, I mean...
Over, but...
Oh, yeah, I, I know, and I don't have... Jason, have we had any, any numbers tossed around?
Two to three.
Two to three million.
Maybe we want slides and all kinds of things, you know?
And what we're having discussions about is, you know, maybe there's a possibility of our hospitals coming to the table, a lot of people are looking at pools for wellness centers to do, to do swimming for some of the therapy that they're involved with. Uh, you know, like I said, Livingwood has expressed interest, they want to have a swimming team in the future, they want to have a diving, diving team. Uh, the YMCA has come to me, Jorge Perez, the president of Y, has come to me and said they are an interesting, uh, partner to sit down and talk to. These are all great possibilities, but once again, we could put the cart before the horse until we had the meeting in Springfield, and even though they did say we could for sixty, and then, and our staff's guest, best estimate is approximately sixty thousand dollars to do what we have to do, but, but the pool, what we're afraid of is that's just gonna be tip of the iceberg again this season, and that's, that's the fear. Yes, sir.
Mayor, uh, I, I think we in the city have resources and the labor to get this done. Uh, I, I feel that workers don't have time, it's a, it's part of our heritage for things like this, and, uh, you know, I'm a hundred percent behind athletics, especially when it's so cool. I just, I, I really think that if we want, if anything, we should have two projects at once, which would have our current pool being maintained, and if we need to have another pool built, then that's like the city council.
We may just, we might keep that up.
Mayor, we knew that this day was gonna come. Unfortunately, it's here. We need to move on from here, call, and prioritize itself, and get this moving for the next two years, let's get it going. We knew it's here, and it's here. It's a tough decision, I understand that whole part of it, but this has been talked about every year since I've been mayor, every year, and anybody who's been here consistently knows, we've had these tough decisions, and, and we have crossed our fingers every year, and, and, and like I said, we've reinvested well over a hundred thousand dollars of city money, not to mention a couple of small grants that we got, uh, to work on the pool in the last seven years. If there's no other comments or questions, the, the motion, we have a motion in a second to make the decision, uh, to, to not repair the pool this year and to, and to allow it to close based on all the, all the list of concerns that they are facing this pool. Roll call.
Can we get more specific, though, and just look into the partnerships? Is it something more specific?
Well, I will tell you that, that the, the process, the speculation of new partnership is that the, is already in motion. Jim Schneider and I have met, we have met with several of those people already, and I can tell you, uh, as much as I feel strongly about this pool, I will quickly act on holding a meeting to look at how we can possibly move forward.
And we talked about this in plenty of steps. It, it's really our job to communicate with the residents, this is what had to be done, but this is what we're doing directly from that.
And, and we had that public meeting, and we had a lot of discussions. There'd been a couple of those residence groups that had been up to the office or Jim Schneider's office, and had met repeatedly since, and we've sat down with them. So, I mean, I think, you know, we are, we are truly addressing the residents. It's a very emotional, tough decision.
I just would like to say to them, but we have a positive plan, we're moving forward.
Well, I, I believe we do, I, and as I said, I have talked to Livingwood ladies today. Okay? We have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
No.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
No.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
No.
How many, uh, one of the four? Eleven of four, motion carries. Mike, do you have one more?
Two more, motion.
Okay, we have seven motion to set the budget public hearing for April ninth, two thousand twelve, at seven P M. in the council chamber. Do I hear a second to approve that? We have motion, no, I have second by Alderman Hayden to approve the date for the hearing of the budget for April ninth, two thousand twelve, at seven P M. The, uh, the Friday speech will immediately follow that public hearing. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Motion for three?
Yes.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the mining's director. So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Maher, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Hart.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries, Alderman Cybert.
Senator, I have taken motion that they've all been approved by the street committee, and I'm going to read them all, and go on to the board.
Anybody object to that? Proceed.
Uh, Roger, street light house trailer at West Main and eighty-second Street, consider approval for the city to upgrade by an additional dollar and fourteen more per month. Street light twenty-five eighty South Eleventh Street, approval for the city to install a street light on existing pole, six ninety-six per hour. East Washington Couplers, consider approval of low bidder hang in the amount of six hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents for East Washington Couplers. Two, uh, project twenty-two, general maintenance sidewalk, consider approval of low bidder right way in the amount of ninety-six thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars for general maintenance sidewalk. Twenty-two, general maintenance kitchen, consider approval of low bidder forty, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars for general maintenance kitchen. Twenty-two, general maintenance infrastructure, consider approval of a low bidder errand in the amount of ninety-five thousand, six hundred ninety-two thousand, twenty-five thousand for general maintenance infrastructure. So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Cybert, who is the second? Second by Alderman Maher, discussion?
Two. Item three, we just get a little background of that.
Coupler is, our coupler, all four lengths of the, the overlay. We applied for somebody during a, um...
State maintenance funds.
Yeah, but, well, we know, we got that, that, that grant for the, what was it called? Two hundred sixty-some thousand?
That, that was state maintenance funds. Yeah, two hundred sixty-seven thousand.
That was followed, it was, it was, came out of the highway, it was a recovery of the, what they had, two... That's been sitting there waiting to go, we had to get the plan done. This section of the coupler, we believe, is the worst of the four, but they all need repaid. There's gonna, this is gonna address a number of curbs and gutters, uh, not one hundred percent, but probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the curbs are gonna be, the sidewalks are gonna be replaced, and it's gonna be an overlay. Also, South Illinois Street to Forest, it's also that price includes dealing with some drainage issues at the Forest Avenue, uh, end of the, end of the street. Thank you.
Quick question, is this number two, the South Eleventh Street Light, is that because it's shy on some kind of city property or something?
No, it's a, it's a, I think it's a dark spot out there, and this lady, uh, has had some concerns for safety. It is our, we've taken that area, then we've developed it, and I think it just was missing adequate light from the time we started to do that subdivision, Autumn Woods. Okay? Tim's checked it out, and he concurs, the light is appropriately, uh, necessary. We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Hart.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries, Alderman Musgrove.
Uh, your honor, on behalf of the ordinance and legal review committee, I would like to make a motion to approve a request from the, is it taco shop to use parking lot to the nine hundred block of West Main Street, uh, on the third Saturday of each month during the warm months, which are May through October of twenty twelve, for their rummage, uh, uh, rummage palooza fundraiser with the stipulation that they leave half of the parking lot open for parking.
Motion by Alderman Musgrove, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hayden, do I hear any discussion?
The park already had leaves half of the parking lot open, we add the ordinance and legal. Did anybody talk to these people, apply that?
I, I don't know, I, I was, um, I would question that myself, and I just kind of thought, uh, Friday ended up not being here part of the day, so I didn't get a chance to go to follow up, and when I saw the final draft, it'd be a handle. Um, I guess, remember, it's far below. Oh, no. It's a not-for-profit, is all I know. Um, I, I had some questions, too, and I honestly didn't have time to investigate it.
They're not for profit.
And I, I, oh, well, um, and I guess, did we also, did somebody talk to the other businesses around there?
It says they talked to the other businesses, but they are kind of using the, they're gonna be selling permits, so I assume we are issuing them one permit? That's what we talked about. This, this is a little bit of a legal problem for us.
Well, and I, I'm not gonna disagree with you, I had some questions about this myself in the last week or so, just have not had a chance to investigate it. I thought we had, and I have not gone to look, I thought we had an ordinance that prohibited yard sales in, in the business district, though.
Oh, great, look at that.
And I did not get a chance to research the impacts.
Well, then I'll change the motion to take rummage sales.
Um, I, I just, and I, you know, quite honestly, had so many other things, and I was, you know, I was out...
Well, and there was not representative from this organization to...
Is there anybody here from this organization here today? And see, there was nobody, there was nobody at the ordinance committee meeting either. We did try to, I know Emily tried to contact him before she went on vacation, trying to get some, uh, some more answers for me.
Because, you know, it's saying we're gonna have tradespeople, company reps selling new in second annual supplies, so we don't wanna compete with our, our hometown businesses.
Exactly.
Second motion to postpone, so, rather than...
So who made the motion to postpone?
Our motion. James' motion.
You made the second, so you won't agree?
Yes, sir.
They did not want to start till May, I think we still got some time. All in favor of postponing till we get more information, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, communications.
Communication from Alamo Hospital requesting permission to hold their fifth annual Pride case run walk on Saturday, September the eighth, twenty twelve, beginning at eight A M.
Who would comply with the request?
Motion by Alderman, aye, second by Alderman Cybert, any discussion on that? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Communication from Bellville Horse Racing Team requesting permission and support to host their third annual competitive cycling event in the city on April twenty-ninth, twenty twelve, from six thirty A M. until five P M.
This is the third year, I think this would be, and this is a Sunday, so everybody understands. Do I hear a motion to support this? Motion by Alderman Maher, who is the second? Second by Alderman Carpenter, any discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Communication from Central East Pride of South Austin, Illinois requesting a following. Number one, to hold a walk on Friday, June fifteenth, twenty twelve, at six thirty P M., and they will provide their own crossing guards. Number two, to hold their fifth annual Pride Festival on Saturday, June sixteenth, twenty twelve, and to close West Main Street from First Street to Third Street, and Second Street from Washington to A Street, in the parking lot behind Club Escapade, at Second Street and West Main. Be closed from eight A M. June sixteenth until twelve A M. June seventeenth.
Who would comply with the request?
Second by Alderman Maher, second by Alderman Cybert, discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
No.
How many? Roll call.
Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
No.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Heisler, uh, communications.
Communication from Bellville Public School District, one eighteen, requesting permission to hold their parade on Monday, May fourteenth, twenty twelve, at nine thirty A M., and requesting traffic and pedestrian control during the parade and the remainder of the day.
Will the request be granted, your honor? Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Hayden, any discussion? All in favor of motion to approve the school picnic parade, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, we have no petitions this evening, resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-eighty-five, thirty-eighty-six, and thirty-eighty-seven.
So moved.
Motion by Kinsella, second by Alderman Heisler, all in favor of reading those resolutions by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-eighty-five, a resolution of support for the City of Bellville Program, year twenty-twelve, application for community development block grant fund.
Do I hear a motion to approve that resolution?
Hello?
Motion by, motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Heisler. I'm sorry, Alderman Cybert, I just heard in that direction. Discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Motion carries, resolution, do I hear a motion to approve resolution? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, read my title, I forgot what I was doing.
Resolution number thirty-eighty-six, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellville, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-eleven and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty-twelve.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved, your honor.
Second by, all motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Carpenter, here a discussion for this resolution. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlo.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-eighty-seven, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellville, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May twenty-eleven and ending on the thirtieth day of April twenty-twelve.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Maher, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Motion carries. See, we have no ordinance. It's unfinished business. I don't know if this one.
Can we talk about that? How, how close?
And everything, everything that Rudy Morris has asked and I have said to Mike Flynn. Mike Flynn is reviewing it and you know, he was out a little bit with some surgery and he talked to me today. He told me, uh, he told me again that he believes that we're following everything that we're supposed to follow. He took everything that she brought to me last meeting, two weeks ago, right after I got it, and he is reviewing it and I think he's due to come to my office for another meeting on Wednesday and he said we were discussing.
Okay. And is it the city's intention to talk to the people in charge?
I have, I, we have talked, just so you understand, we have had Capstone in the office and we have been in contact. Our staff has with them and we have sent our inspectors down there repeated times. Paul Bowman, Roger Barfield, uh, uh, Mr. Erlinger, the electrical inspector, we have had people down there. Mr. Seibert, would you agree? They've been there many times.
They've been there, they're not letting it prove it.
Well, and, and, you know, like I said, they stopped work for a while because the payments stopped coming from HUD too. Their money stopped and, and so things came to a halt. When the money stops, the...
But that doesn't address things like the air conditioners for sitting on a pub.
Well, and, and, and we have, um, we will go out and look at that.